Oh, okay. What is posthumum?
Yes.
What they give you?
That's what I was wondering.
Okay. What do?
All right, I've got ten blocks. Go ahead and call this meeting in order.
Most gracious heaven father, we come to you this morning as giving you all the praise and glory for this wonderful day that you've given us. Dear God, thank you for these folks that have showed up to participate in our democracy. That's what it's all about. Dear heaven father, we pray for rain for the county and we pray for peace in this United States. Dear God, I'd like to mention thirty-six souls that have been shot down as our first responders. Terrible, terrible. Shouldn't ever happen. So much hatred in this world. We know who's stirring that pot. Forgive us of our many, many sins, leading guys through this meeting. May it be for your glory. Amen.
Of which allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Sorry.
All right, at this time in business before the court, not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I don't see any.
Dan, I'd like to say something about the rollbacks.
Okay.
First off, I'm very much against the rollback. I think it is very detrimental to the county. I was working here during the last rollback. Nobody wins. The checks that most people will get will be less than a hundred dollars. Is that worth giving something that we value so much? The county is the only one that provides quality of life services like libraries, parks, fusing. We help with fusing. We don't totally fund it, but we... But youth count... I mean, there are so many things that for your forty-four cents you get that the county provides. And we just... I'm here with a lot of retirees. We have been educated to the county for a total of four-hundred-and-sixty-six years. I just had one hundred people. We feel like we represent the county and we're out fighting for the county. So I just want to reiterate to each one of you how much I appreciate the court. I do. I just want people to understand what they're really looking at. Your total tax bill doesn't all go to the county even though the county collects it. You have a very small portion. So I just want to give everybody that. And the people that I represent here, they also feel the same way. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. And I have to say, it is a great honor to have so many of them that have retired from Scarry County here in our midst. And thank you for coming. We appreciate you today. We're going to change things up just a little bit. I'm going to jump so that the young folks can get back to school. I know they're excited about that. But we're going to move to... We're going to go ahead and take some new business real quick. We're going to consider a one-day... Or it's a proclamation for National Four-H Week. And in this proclamation, it states, "Whereas the Scarry County Commissioners Court has vowed to honor the Four-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service for a hundred-and-twelve years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas this admirable program which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, inform attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas its more than five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from eight to nineteen, held from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represents a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the services of its more than twenty-two-thousand volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the Four-H Program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative, inspiring programs, continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore be it, resolve the Scarry County Commissioners Court hereby designated October sixth through twelfth, two thousand and nineteen as National Four-H Week in Texas and commend the Four-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success." I had the honor of going to their awards banquet a month or two ago. And there were so many kids and parents that were involved in that. And of course, Rhonda and Greg were there. And it was just a fantastic program. There's so much involvement there that it's just... It's an amazing, amazing program. And you see the caliber of young folks that we have in there. And just to see them blossom and bloom and come out of their shells the way they do at these programs, it's just fantastic. So do we need to take a vote on this, or is this just a...?
I think we have to.
Okay. Judge, it absolutely makes my heart glad to know that we have something like the Texas AgroLife Extension Service here in Scarry County. That... And this is another program that we support as a county that would bring kids together like they have and to make them model citizens and to give us an opportunity to have kids that have some experience about leadership. And one day will take all of our places and other boards throughout this county that are very important to the life of this community. And so with that, I would make a motion that we accept a one-day proclamation for Four-H. Thank you all of you here for putting one day in.
All in favor? Thank you for so much that y'all... For everything that y'all do for the community and for the kids. And thank you, kids, for being involved and doing so much. I know they go raise a lot of money for the community as well. And it's just so good to see everything that y'all do.
Judge, did you mind if I do a quick... Prince, I had a little...
Absolutely.
This county was built by doers. For more than a hundred years, Four-H has been a part of growth, always empowering youth to speak through action and by doing so, helping kids to develop with their skills and the communities around them. By what if, across our country, we could apply this idea to all youth by growing a culture and generations of doers? What if we can help kids grow the life skills they need to by creating the life experiences in spite of them to do? To do well, to do good, do over, do amazing, do stim, do healthy, do differently. What if you can spark change and impact the millions of kids? Support your community and create value for your community... Company by in... Sorry, by inspiring a movement with just one phrase. Inspire kids to do. So how can we put our thoughts into actions and inspire youth and their families to be a part of this great organization that inspires youth? Each of your officer team is charged with setting goals for our club and a theme for this year. This year, as an officer team, we chose a theme, "Why Not?" Each officer decided on a personal goal to challenge other members and families. Each goal and challenge is a reminder of ways we can create a better club for the youth of our community. We chose the following goals for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty year. Why not chase your dreams by participating in projects that you have been passionate about? Club president, Hannah Caswell. Why not get more people involved by encouraging them to come to monthly meetings and participate in projects and camps? Club vice president, Anthony Hale.
Why not become closer to the family by making members and families feel welcome and forming friendships? Club secretary, Jennifer Martin. Why not help the club by assisting leaders, volunteers, extension agents with programs, projects, and activities? Club treasurer, Paulie Herring. And why not strive for success by giving our best effort in the projects we sign up for and representing our club in a positive light? Club junior president, Kobe Caswell.
Why not learn by doing by getting involved in hand-on projects and community service projects our club offers? Club junior president, club junior vice president, Swave Campbell. Why not put yourself out there and try things to bring you out of your comfort zone and grow socially and improve speaking skills? Reporter, Frank McCallum.
Why not be great by doing because you never know how good you are at something until you get involved and try? Reporter, Patty Lewis. Why not be a better leader by leading by example to set a good pattern for others to follow? Club sergeant of arms, Lauren Caswell. Call him.
Thank y'all.
And we should have a token of their appreciation. I've made homemade a breakfast.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely, yeah. Go ahead and cut it up in here. All right, where are we going to look?
Right here.
Up there. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Now, y'all don't have to leave. You can stay and watch. But that's... That's up to y'all. Thank y'all. Hi, there's... There's help around. I guarantee it.
Don't lay in the break room.
If that's our future, I think the future's in good hands. I really do. All right, we'll do a presentation and discussion of Department head committee board of courts now. Everybody have a chance to look over those?
I'm assuming they were busy.
They were busy.
We killed lots of hogs, a lot of cowards.
Yeah. Absolutely. Anything else on this? All right, no business. We'll consider approval of previous court minutes.
We've been acknowledging that we approved previous court minutes as written except for one correction that the county took this minute.
All in favor? Court to discuss and consider any precinct project schedule and staffing. Anything that we need to be aware of?
We're going to speak of the fueling station and what we want there.
That's right. I would... I knew there was something. I was trying to remember when I'm looking at this this morning. All right, fueling station is... They're supposed to come tomorrow and put in the new pumps and any other equipment. The question that has come up is, is anybody going to use red dye diesel at that fueling station? If not, we won't get fuel in that tank.
I don't intend to. Never. I don't think it would.
The only reason that we would is if we run out there and he couldn't get it. We could bring my trailer in here. But we don't have to do that. If it saves money to do it that way, let's do it that way.
And Mr. McCormick has a fueling station there at his... If he's the one that gets that issue at his place where he can actually fill the trailer and put it there for us as well.
Well, you can get him out there. Oh, and he... A lot of times he just got one truck and he's taking pretty big...
Now, this is actually at his business. We weren't able to get some. We took a trailer or then our trucks to his business over here on Avenue B. And right there for your post office, and he's got a fuel system. He filled us up there.
No, I say...
It would just cost so much money.
I don't know when we don't... In a situation like... I'm watching my... Yeah. I'll call you back.
Yes.
Well, that sounds good. And we'll just go...
One other thing that I'd like to address, and I've done a lot of research, but not to where I feel like I'm exhausted. We have an opportunity to purchase unleaded fuel without any ethanol. I've read a popular mechanics dissertation on ethanol and what it does to vehicles. In 2011, many of the major automobile companies said that they would probably void the warranties if E-15 was put into any of those cars in 2012 and above. We have E-10 right now, but they're talking about going to fifteen percent. They also talked about the fact that alcohol, and I know this because I use it in propane, I use methanol, which it encapsulates water. It draws water. They said that somewhere during the making, during the storage, during the transportation, during the keeping in a storage facility, somewhere in that particular place because the alcohol ethanol being in the fuel, that it could actually cause damage to any vehicle. And they have found damage in many vehicles that have used the E-10, let alone the E-15. I think all of us know that small engines like lawnmowers, just bought one, my son did, over from Walmart in Big Springs. He ran it one time on E-10 and it killed it. Dead. And never did get to run again. They would not warrant it because of E-10 being put in. So we have an opportunity to... I've talked to the constable, and he can get it out of New Mexico or Oklahoma, either one. Sometimes it's the same price as the E-10 is. It's a little higher. Maybe fill our tanks with regular unleaded without any ethanol in it because of the small engines that we have and because of the damage that can occur of a time with ethanol. And it can... Water damage, the water that it collects or the... I've even seen on some of the small engines where it looked like corn had reassembled in the fuel lines. The fuel line was stocked up and the guy that was repairing the door, he said, "I have dug out something similar to corn." And so if we can do that, not only does it keep us from having that possible damage in our vehicles and our small engines, but it also gives us more BTUs. And that's where I have not found exactly the answer to that is how many more BTUs. The EIA says, Energy Information Agency, says that it's about three percent reduction in mileage if you use ethanol in your... For your fuel. Of course, they want us to use ethanol to... In order to have a good supply of gasoline. But knowing the things that ethanol can do to our vehicles and to our small engines, I would suggest that we go with the unleaded without it in there. And welcome any of your research or any comments on that that you have about it.
Well, Mike said he could get it.
Yes.
Suppose Mickey, National Fuel, God rest his soul.
Yes.
He is the one that was bringing it here.
Yes, sir.
The Handy Mark and whatnot.
Yes.
Delivered to me personally. But Mike said he could get it.
You're talking about the regular?
Mm-hmm.
That Eso? Well... That regular Eso wouldn't run in my... My lawnmower.
Doctor, you're talking about Mike or Mickey?
Mickey.
Mickey?
That... Bless your heart, I love him. It wouldn't run in my... It would run in my old Jeep that I got.
Where did you purchase it from? From his... Over here or at Handy Mark?
Right out there in a truck.
Okay. And it was without ethanol?
He got it out of Oklahoma.
Okay. Well, it runs in all my lawnmowers.
Maybe maybe one more.
I got a damn brand new one. Ask her if she run it. I'm not putting real... But I'm not arguing a deal. I'm not for anything y'all want to do. I don't have to do it. I mean, I'm gonna need something else. What's best for the county that's cheaper since that car out from me?
It's not necessarily always the cheapest. It is if you compare re...
It is, too. You have to go...
Yeah. Do you have a lot of maintenance or...?
Get that up.
Yes. Yes. It does become cheap. And gets better mileage. Any problem? So I'm going to ask them to bring a load of unleaded with... Without the ethanol in it. If that's okay with them. When we get ready.
Anything else?
I hate my diesel too. All right.
All right, court to discuss and consider.
Did we stick some dikes out there?
I... We will do. We haven't, but we will.
Yeah, we'll see if there's anything in it. We want to make sure there's no water or anything in there.
Water.
We'll make sure.
Court to discuss and consider resolution to nominate members to the appraisal district board of directors.
Judge, I talked to Mr. Cross this morning, and he has agreed to serve another two-year term. So I nominate Fred Cross.
Any other nominees? Do we need any other nominees? Just need one, though. Or do we need two?
We can do five, but... Since I've never done an election, it's always been whoever would serve. It's hard enough to get them.
Sure.
But that's totally up to the court.
We've done it before.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All in favor of nominating Fred Cross? All right, court to consider bid for golf course grounds maintenance management for the Scarry County Golf Course. We sent this back until now. There were some questions about the contract. And my understanding is that the contract is good because it's with a corporation and not just an entity. So that would cover anything from that. Were there any other questions about that agreement?
If the court votes, still want to do another three-year, four-year, five-year, what term? And what term the court wants to set? So I'm just... That is the most... Also, do you want to turn out an act when you're going to do your after-deduction terms? Five years? I just need more... The contract is so close to the end.
Anybody have any questions, Sid? He's here.
Judge?
Yes, sir.
In respect to the golf course, if you're not able to sell it and you have to do something about the asbestos in the building, how much time do you have to do that? Are you going to be mandated to move the building? Are you mandated to clean it up?
No, sir. We're not mandated. However, last year, Commissioners Court did vote to remove the building. The first thing that would have to be would be... Would have to be done is an asbestos survey. So that... That would have to be done first before anything. And then the removal of the asbestos if there is any. And then the demolition of the building. So it's kind of a process to get through there. It is secured right now. People are not allowed to go in there. So that's kind of a separate deal from the maintenance of the course. So they don't do anything with the building. The maintenance crew doesn't do... The contract doesn't allow them or doesn't specify anything about the building. So they don't do anything with it. They'll maintain the grass around it, but that's about it. What about...
Term?
Term? Stick with the three years?
Three years.
With an automatic renewal?
Sid's done an awesome job.
You don't want to do an automatic renewal?
I don't.
No, it's fine, too. I mean, I don't mind revisiting it every three years.
I don't like three years. I don't like it all the year, year.
Year to year? With or without? No automatic renewal, just each year?
Each year. My issue with three, four, or five years automatic, you're running into issue if there ever is one or you have to go back to the contract, blah, blah, blah. And it... That way Sid knows, we know, it's year to year.
So each year, we want to rebid this?
Wow. I don't know if I'd want to be a contractor and have to worry about my budget from year to year. I mean, if you've got somebody that's doing a great job and has done it for three years or four years.
I wouldn't say you would do it.
No. No, I wouldn't say. I'm just saying it's difficult for him to know what's coming up next year. And to... I mean, I think it ought to be longer than a year just to... For budgetary, his budgetary prowess and being able to get that done and knowing what he's doing. I mean, if he's not doing the job that he needs to do, we do have the contractor with an app.
I think there's a sixty-day app built into it.
And so, I mean, he's being watched every day by people that are playing out there. We don't necessarily have to watch over him.
Since it's your contract, what's your thoughts?
I don't know if I'd be able to do it year to year. It just... I mean, if it came to the end of the year, how do I know if I keep my employees or if I have to let them go? It's too much unknown to me.
In the current contract, it does have the... Under books report, representative courts, it says Weaver shall provide a status report on conditions and needs of the course as requested by the county judge in no instance less than once annually, June of each year, in effort to assist the Commissioners Court in preparing. So at that time, you could also use that time for any follow-up that would need to be done. And it says that Weaver will make a representative available to Commissioners Court during public meetings scheduled in the ones listed above for the purposes of allowing the court to discuss the needs of the course. So we do have that in the current contract.
Seems like I always get myself in mind. You know, if you... If you're working just year to year and you've got a family, and I understand you've got a young boy now. I just... I think you ought to have a contract that's longer than a year. Now, then, it's... That's just... That's just because... I mean, you've got a family. You've got to say, "Well, here's this opportunity over here." And I know I got four years over here. I mean, you, you, you've got a family, you've gotta say, well, here's this opportunity over here, and I know I got four years over here. I don't know the year to year that somebody and is very capable in this time and day that it's done, figure out some way to figure, you've done something that you didn't do, or you just thought about it ten years ago and get your job. So I, I, I'm for, if the contract was, what it, what's it been?
Three years.
I'm, I'm for at least that. Uh, and like I say, we got a man over there standing over there, he knows all the deals to get him out of it if, if it ain't right. So, uh, it's just, to me, a proper way to do. In other words, I, I, listen. The devil with the, the rollback. I woke up while I was going, said, why they had to my word that far? I don't think it's gonna happen. I'm gonna act just like it's not gonna happen. Because I think we got somebody on our side that, that sometimes I wonder if they don't, it, it is on their side. And I'm, I'm thinking it's, it's gonna be okay. And just to kick the table, uh, the, the, the chair out from under everybody, I, I'm just, I'm just totally against it.
Okay, tie that back to where we are.
I'm tying it back.
You wanna go three years?
I wanna go three years. You ain't doing, if you, Sid, if you ain't doing it right, I'll be the first one to come out there and take you. This is the way that I wanna beat around the bush. I'm not a bush speaker.
Is that your, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make three, two seconds, second it.
Okay.
Okay, with or without it? No automatic is what I'm understanding. No automatic, no, I have the three years.
No, and if it comes back like it comes back.
You come back here, okay. All right, all in favor? All votes? All right, four to one. Thank you. All right, court to discuss and consider modifications to the deed restrictions and, deed restrictions and covenants relating to the Maverick West subdivision. Got with Melissa Petty and our attorney, uh, Mr. Mike Hartman, about these deed restrictions, also talked a little bit to, uh, um, Mr. Cotton. Um, and these will go to Mr. Cotton to make sure that, uh, it's what we were looking at. Uh, the only rule changes are in number four of the deed restrictions. It says, right now it says all dwellings, garages, and other private outbuildings shall be constructed of brick or stone. Changed it to all dwellings and garages shall be constructed of brick and stone. And then further down there, it says, um, no metal siding or corrugated metal on any structure, garage, or storage building. And that's been changed to on any residence or garage. And of course, everybody's gonna have to agree to this, not just us, but all the folks that live out there. Changing number seven, or adding to number seven, the prohibition on re-subdivision and consolidation. This restriction shall not apply to the lots located on the outside perimeter of the subdivision, on the southwest or north sides thereof. Lots located on the outside perimeter may be combined with no more than one additional lot or a portion thereof. And of course, the wording's not, it could be different depending on what Mr. Cotton does with it. But residents built on more than one lot or parts of more than one lot shall be constructed within the center line. So you can get a lot or a lot and a half or up to two lots, and you can take, and if you get more than one lot, you have to build it in the center line. And that's only on the outside perimeter of it, um, not the interior of it. The setback requirements would change from what we have, the ten-foot setback requirement from the rear lot, lot line. And then, I think it was, five feet on the sides. It would change to adopt and impose all setbacks and lot line requirements as provided in the city of Snyder's own ordinance as of the time of construction. So when these were written, it wasn't within the city limits. It is within the city limits now. So just go with what the city ordinance says. That way, there's no, well, they said we did this, and the city says that you can do this, so that's it. But that, those would be the only changes to these and just kind of ease it up a little bit for some of those folks. Right now, there is, um, a couple that wants to buy two lots on the outside perimeter and put a house on those two lots.
You need something to help get rid of it?
I have something. I agree. Get it back on the tax show.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely, yeah.
If that's the, uh, motion voted the court, I would suggest, just that we not sign it today. Talk to Mr. Cotton first if he has any tweaks to our proposed language. And also wait and see if we need to get the other consent of the landlord before the court signs it or if the court needs to sign it first. I dropped it off to, to Mr. Cotton last week. I have no chance to visit back with him this week.
Okay.
But if the court approves it, I would say just give the county judge authority to sign it whenever necessary. And that way, if you want to order up the dates.
Okay.
Judge, I make a motion that we, um, allow the modifications made to the deed restrictions and covenant, relating to Maverick West subdivision.
All in favor?
And the judge authority?
Well, I'm gonna win. I'm gonna give you the authority to sign it. And give you the court, the authority to sign it for us once the, uh, Cotton, Cotton has decided.
Okay. All right, new business, court to consider accepting donations to county entities. We have the senior center, um, donations, which is four hundred and, seventeen hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-one cents. And then, um, if y'all remember, we discussed that lot across the street from the Boys and Girls Club. Changing it to a parking lot with the assumption that it was ours. It is not ours. It belongs to, um, Rose and Vern Chandler out of San Antonio. Can you reach that attorney? I'll let you take this right there.
I just, uh, wrote Miss Chandler a letter and asked her if she would be willing to sell or donate the property to Cross Fund Youth Center because all the parents, uh, are just parking up and down the street there. It's, uh, it's very dangerous for the kids. Cause they're going out between parked cars on the road and the chances of them being run over is like disastrous by that. So we have been parking on our property for some time. And I just asked her if she would, uh, think about that. About a month or so later, she sent a letter back through her son and said that she would like to donate the property to the county for whatever it wanted differently. And so I thought that was very sweet of her.
So we wanna accept the donations?
I make a motion that we accept the donations from our...
Anytime somebody's giving you money, you're free to.
Yeah, give me the information as well as mail it after we've prepared gifting and forward that to her and sign it.
Yes, sir. All right, court to consider the addition of a road to the Scarry County Road Use Agreement with Coyote Wind. How are you doing today?
I'm doing fine.
Uh, this is County Road eleven nineteen, I believe, was the road that was...
That's great.
One of you two.
Would you like me to speak to it or?
Can, or we, I mean?
Y'all's option. Yeah, this is just an addition of the road. We want you to take care of it. We want it in the road use agreement. We appreciate you, uh, using those roads in a, in a good manner. I've already talked to some of your guys. They're actually improving those roads. Some are putting as much as two inches of nucleachy.
Correct.
On those roads, and some as much as four and six inches. And so, so that y'all will be able to use them and, and stay in good condition for those that use them.
Yes.
In the county. And so appreciate you coming, and I make a motion that we add eleven nineteen to the road use agreement. To Coyote Wind.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now the next three. Do we wanna do them all together or separately or?
However you want to proceed, Judge. I can talk about them, uh, together, and then if y'all wanna vote them separately, that's fine.
Okay. Let's, let's talk about them together. It's, uh, consider amendments to the tax abatement for Canyon Wind Project, Comanche Solar and Flatland Solar.
So these are three projects, two solar, one wind, the court approved abatements on probably a year and a half ago. They are not gonna meet their deadlines for getting their projects constructed due to party, parts issues, supply chain issues, manufacturing issues. And as y'all know, there's a lot of living parts that come together on these things. And so all three have requested that those tax abatement agreements still continue in effect, but that they be set off to give them time to complete the project, I believe, by the end of twenty twenty-one. So the projects would actually, they must have started in twenty twenty-two. I do have proposed amendments for each of those. Remember, two of those are in the Iowa area, and then one of the sub-plagued targets is in the Indiana area. So if the court can still find, I already have it drafted, all we have to do is get the court to sign the mail-in to the principals and the respective entity, get them to sign, and it will be the same agreement. A agreement you've already approved, it just pushes it off another year and a half.
Done it several times in the past for others that weren't able to get it and get, get it done. There are bigger projects. During y'all's precincts, I guess y'all would fill one.
Ain't bad. I do, but I'm gonna abstain from the conversation.
Okay, cause you're in, in one of them, right?
Yep.
So I make a motion that, and we can do them all together, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That we accept the amendments as presented by our county attorney to the three, uh, two, two solar farms and one wind farm. Uh, so they may be able to come in and, and the time that allotted in those amendments to build these solar and wind farm.
All in favor?
Judge, I have multiple originals that we'll just get you to sign after court, and we'll mail those out. Somebody has an original.
Okay.
In one of these.
Yes.
Uh, consider certification of additional revenue in the form of proceeds from Afuel. This is...
I received the, the check from, the annual check that we usually get from Afuel for fifty thousand dollars. We're just starting to find that. Um, also, I believe Bob was wanting to see if the court would be okay for this putting it into the Texas Class Airport Reserve Fund. Their current amount in there is a hundred and three thousand one seventy-eight twenty-one. This money is being kept to, um, due to the taxiway, correct?
Taxiway, taxiway. Should be covered.
And this would be our matching funds for the grant? And this is just free money basically for that, correct? I'll do it ninety, ten, I'll pay our...
You want, you want to go ahead?
Yes, let's go ahead and do the proceeds from housing inmates.
Okay, there's also the cert fund revenue for the inmates. Um, two payments, one of twenty-eight thousand eighty dollars and one of thirty-four thousand five sixty. This is just the inmate money. It's not the medical money. That goes to a totally different line.
True.
Um, there will be an additional budget amendment at a later date once I get with, to share.
Okay.
Make a motion, we accept the Afuel corporation check along with the provision of keep.
Second.
Is it okay to go to Texas class?
Can it go on his phone?
Yeah. I make a motion to go to Texas class.
All right, thanks. All right, it's been voted off. Uh, court to consider adopting a resolution on the twenty twenty Indigent Defense Grant Program. This is a grant program for indigent defense, and as you know, indigent defense goes up every year. Just states is that we have to pay more and more, and this is a grant to kind of help offset some of that, so, um...
The amount that's budgeted for the twenty twenty grant is twenty-five thousand, which has actually went up a little bit. But it doesn't cover near the amount that we pay for indigent defense. But it helps, so please.
I, I should have, I should have been more prepared on this, but do you have any idea how much it is that we pay out on indigent, indigent?
I'm currently, I have to have the annual report prepared by the end of this month, so I'm currently working on that and sending letters out to all of the court-appointed attorneys to get them to go in and fill out their information. So I don't have it at this time, but I will have it, um, because this one only counts for criminal defense. It doesn't count for CPS cases and stuff like that.
Okay.
So there is multiple costs. We pay an extraordinary amount for CPS cases compared, and then we also pay a lot for crimes. So, um, I bet I will, by the end of the month, I will have an amount.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to accept the Indigent Defense Grant Program.
Second. All in favor?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Yes. Court to discuss and consider the new renewal rate for TPLIC medical and retiree, RX care prescription drug coverages, and the medical, and the extent of future candidate participation of cost association there with them. Good morning, Nelda.
Good morning. Let me start by saying that, um, ever since I have been here and even before, the retirees have been offered health insurance through tax. And the county has, in the past, always paid a portion of their premium. As well as if their spouse was on the insurance when they were an active employee, then that spouse could also be on the supplemental insurance once they retired. And the county also paid a portion on that. With having said that, uh, we got the renewal that will go into effect January one. Overall, it's going up eight percent, five percent on the medical and three percent on the prescription drug coverage. I had, I figured, um, this year approximately, the county will pay a hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars toward the retirees' medical. If the county absorbs the eight percent, that would be an additional twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents for twenty twenty. And that's only the retirees right now that is on, uh, that supplemental insurance. The county has absorbed the increase for several years in the past. But there again, this is y'all's decision. You can absorb it, pass it on, take part of it. It's entirely up to the court. And in doing some figuring, depending on the age bracket that you're in, it would go up anywhere from fourteen dollars, just thirteen forty-five, I think, up to twenty dollars and maybe forty cents if you're ninety plus.
Per month?
A month.
Okay.
Monthly, yes, correct, monthly.
I have a question about something. So, um, can you explain a little bit how it works, how the insurance works? All right, I understand that up to sixty-five, you're on?
Blue Cross.
Blue Cross.
If you're an active employee and you're sixty-five or older, as long as you're an active employee, you stay on the Blue Cross. If you retire, which we have one that I can think of, one retiree that's not sixty-five, he has to stay on Blue Cross. He pays a bigger portion of the premium, um, because it costs more. But he stays on that until he becomes sixty-five. And once you retire, you're sixty-five, and you have to have Medicare AMV, and you definitely want that in place. Then you go on to the supplemental insurance that's offered through tax. TAC. The premiums, of course, if you're younger, is cheaper and is, like I said, it's age-bracketed, uh, so it continues to go up about every, uh, let's see here, it's five or ten years, every five years it increases some. And you have to take, it's, it's the medical and prescription, you have to, you know, you can't take one or the other, they both have to go together, uh, that is one of the conditions, uh, with TAC and the company that is offering this through TAC.
You, you made the statement that the county has absorbed the cost for the retirees' medical insurance in the past.
They have absorbed a portion of it, and also each year we do this, and it becomes, normally insurance always goes up, we all know that, and it's effective come January one. There has been several times in the past that the county has absorbed the increase.
Hasn't there been times, though, that it went down? And I believe last year was like seventeen?
Last year it did, last year it did, but we never know. Yeah.
Exactly.
And we absorbed that in backing to the county, we didn't pay out, right?
That is correct. What I've got from them, it was absorbed in 2015, 2016, 2017, it was passed back to the retirees because it was in that freeze deal, and when that busted in, in the pieces, they just said, they just give it back to them that year. And then, uh, 2019, which is now, it's, uh, it's, it's been, uh...
Eight percent increase.
Correct. Uh, I believe that year, the county absorbed a portion of it, but the retiree also absorbed.
Okay, I've got, I've got, but you know, mine is marked it was, uh, matched on to the retirement.
A portion of it was passed on.
Thank you.
Yes, correct.
So the total increase is twelve thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-seven?
That's what I'm figuring with everyone that is on, on this insurance right now, the supplemental.
Based off their current age.
Yeah, based off their current age.
Okay.
This last year, that didn't change any, remember?
Yeah, no, it didn't have any.
But I think it will.
Because it only is when they turn at the, like, sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five.
Well, there's, there's some folks that have, uh, filled out public participation forms. Is there anybody that has filled out a form that would like to speak? Yes, or Mr. Leonard?
I would just like to speak on behalf of the retired county employees, that many of us in this room, uh, were honest, able employees until around 2012 or 13, when Tac or someone decided that we weren't paying people right. And we hung in there because with the low salaries, under, under, under the umbrella of not with the, you know, with the oil patch or any of that, because we, uh, enjoy the county benefits with a lot less pain than people are getting now. But I'd just like to say that, I would like to have the county to pick up this April ship and, uh, and go from there. I know, I see a lot of agents sitting here that work for basically nearly, below the scale of the, of the, of the county pay rate, pay scale, and that we just can't really pick up the tab.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Yes, Peggy?
Yes. I'd like to say that I'm a property owner, that's fair. I'm a county retiree. I also feel, as I think all of us do as county retirees, that we're still county employees, that we're still part of the county. We're very loyal to the county. Uh, I know all of us, I do not support all of that, we've been through that, uh, but we're loyal to the county, we appreciate y'all, but we, we would hope you would consider our loyalty and our service to the county our hunger of years. We've all given our best to the county. Many of us have almost half our lives in this courthouse of, of working for the county, and we'd like for you to remember that and consider it.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Okay.
Now can I?
Yes, sir, you can. I didn't want to interrupt Ms. Everett.
Do what?
I didn't want to interrupt Ms. Everett.
Oh, you didn't, I thank you, I appreciate it, you're dealing with a hard-headed little devil, ex-commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I would like to visit with y'all, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning and share with you, sorry about that, watch out. About the retirees' insurance, let us go back and let us check on something. The proceeding, I understand and know the position of the court and the situation of the court that it finds itself in today. I hate to bring this word to you, but it ain't no new one, it's not a new one. Ever since the oil companies has been here in Skerrit County, the commissioner's court has had exactly the same problem. You try to compete salary-wise with oil companies, and I can guarantee you, you're going to lose, first time, every time. So what we found out in doing that, in, in noticing that, of, of that situation, what do we have that we can offset that? An incentive to keep and maintain good quality employees that know what they're doing and keep them job. Part of that was the health insurance program. In doing that, we were able to maintain, because they, whenever you go out and hire someone, they understood and knew that there was a greater than average percentage, that the county was going to go on ahead and take care of them, even into their retirement years. So that was the incentive that we had, and for us to deviate from that particular idea, I think would be, uh, a travesty, because it, we did, we hired them on a low scale, and we gave them that incentive, and to destroy that or reduce it or, court can do whatever it wants to, I understand that, I know it, but consider what we have already gone through in light of your decision, I think that's where it is. If the court in its own infinite wisdom, uh, wants to dump that amount on the employees, uh, that's another thing, because there's an old adage that says, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I would suggest that the court might consider taking that, uh, incentive away from the county employees that we presently have, and see if that fits. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your time, and I will relinquish the remainder.
Thank you.
I would like to speak too, there's several people that haven't retired yet, but were close. I personally got thirty-five years in county, Sheila Means has thirty-four years in, Tommy Johnson has twenty, and there's other people in here that...
I got thirty-five?
Thirty-five years, that we, we made our plans for retirement thinking that the county was going to continue to pay a portion of that, if that's taken away, it, it, it's, it's going to be a disservice to a lot of people that, that have given their, their lives to the county. So I would just like y'all to think about that, that there, there's a lot of years served in here for people that, we didn't make a lot, did we, Sheila? We worked, I know eighteen years, I was on twenty-four hour call, uh, seven days a week, eighteen years. So, I remember those days.
I'm C.D. Gray, uh, ex-commissioner. I'm not old enough to retire, so I'm going to talk about these people that have retired. You know, the employees, I still got, well, I've got some that's retired, that I've hired, but we told those people the benefits, and, uh, I don't want to go back on our words saying we're going to take them away from them, uh, because, like Ralph said, that is an incentive for people to keep working for the county because of the benefits, and, uh, if we go to take it some way that was guilt when we started, uh, that's going back on our words, to me, and I'd appreciate it if you do this. I don't mind paying the increase, but the portion of it the county pays, they should continue to do that, man.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Yes, Ms. Lynn?
May again. I'd like to say that we really appreciate what y'all done, but we really hope that you consider keeping how much you've been paying all this time, because all of us have questioned the same. The increases for the last five years, as Craig was saying, the total increase to the county was ten dollars and seven cents, because it increased two years, the county paid for it one year, and there was no increase. You take that increase that y'all got back and you kept, it's a total net of seven, ten dollars and seven cents, that's not much, twelve thousand dollar increase, that's nothing when you talk about, even in the rollback, that's not even a net. As my famous auditor used to say, y'all are straining at a elephant trying to swallow in that, and straining in that, or something to that sort of, but anyway, um, there's not that much but for, where you have several ladies and gentlemen that are sold from households, there's a lot of widows in here, and that's a lot of money, and every five years it increases, and we take the run of it. I know mine's going to go up probably thirty dollars next year because I turned seventy-five. That doesn't sound like much, but in the twenty-six years I worked for the county and the five-year sense, county retirees have had one, two percent increase in their retirement. One, the city gets two percent every year, and then you go up on the insurance and we have to pay that. So I just hope and pray that y'all see and appreciate the employees that you have had, that you do have, and that you continue to take care of them. Thank y'all so much.
Did you want to say something, Mr.?
She won't let down her bar. What I want to say, y'all can take a big burden off of it if you just sell that million-dollar car for it.
I don't believe I heard that last time.
My deal has been brung up several times, but I'm going to stick my foot in it one more time. The, uh, hold on just a second. Can I move it?
Are you looking for that one?
I'm looking for it. Okay, I didn't have to go overthinking, and that would be terrible. Here it is right here. Okay, uh, the, what I was told, the oldest in here, uh, was, you said ninety?
Ninety plus.
Yeah, well, I didn't have that ninety on my deal, I had that eighty-nine.
Right, we don't have one right now. It was, right, right. But I mean, if, if there's somebody that's ninety plus.
Right, right. Okay, well, my problem in this deal is, is it's already been brung up, that's what they told it to have. Well, if you can't go back and stay with, if you're going to change your program, you don't change it in the middle of the spring. I don't think the program ought to be changed, to be honest with you. I think you're running scared when you do that. There's other places that, uh, that we can work on. We didn't dig this hole last year, we did this hole several years back, and it's going to take a while to work out of it, and that's one reason people don't understand if, if, I asked this morning, kind of getting off subject, it's a second, I asked this morning about how long it would take us to get back, it'd be ten years if that thing happened. When in ten years, there won't be nothing here but a dust bowl.
And that's ten years if there's no change in anything.
That's right. And, and, and so, uh, but to get back on these folks' deal is, they was told they would have it, and you just don't, you just don't stop something in the middle of the spring. You either cut it off from when you hire somebody from now on, way back in front, and say, okay, we're not going to give you this, then they can say, well, I'm not going to come work for you, or they can say, okay, I'll make my own deal, but the people that's here, the people that's, it already went off, uh, you know, seem like to me, if, if we don't watch it, we try to, uh, to squeeze a nickel to make that buffalo do what he's supposed to do, because we're going down and we're, we're finding folks here that, like you say, they, they, they made their retirement deal on this banner. So, uh, uh, you know, it's, 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 the only word I know is just not right, and, and if that's the way we're going to try to balance a budget, Lord help us, that, that dog don't hunt. You just don't balance it on wages and, and, and people's backs. You, you know, you balance it on not giving so many wages, and undoubtedly, we've done that, this was supposed to be, if I understood, five years since it had one, so, uh, you know, that's again, kind of a dog on another trail, but it's, uh, just to bring folks in here and say, we're going to cut this, and, and think that's going to help get this budget straight and get over the hump if we roll back and all that kind of stuff, that's, that's fishing without any bait, uh, so, uh, that's, that's my problem right there.
Okay. I certainly appreciate your research, Craig, and I agree with you that we shouldn't be, uh, taking away something that people have budgeted for, and, I mean, it's, it's difficult enough to make it in retirement, whenever you get there and you don't, uh, have the funds that you maybe thought you were going to have. Maybe there's something like what we found out over at the appraisal district recently, that when they retire, because they haven't put in the social security, they found that even if a spouse that may, that's not working, that may be working the oil field and gets the, uh, has been paying social security, that they actually, that spouse is working for the appraisal district only gets a third of that money from social security, because the federal state government decided that it's a double-dipping in the state and federal money. And so there's a lot of research that has to be done to know what people are really truly getting, because most people get out there in retirement and what they thought they were going to have or get isn't there for various reasons. And so I certainly believe that we should not, especially, uh, those that have already retired... or those that are going to retire, uh, in, within ten or fifteen years even, take that benefit away because they are, they've budgeted for it, they've planned for it. And, uh, we don't know what we're getting. Now, some of you guys that had TCDRS retirement, it may have worked the way you thought it was, and it may not have. We're learning new stuff all the time, just like this social security thing. And so I agree that we keep what we have in place, and that's a good suggestion. If somebody that comes on brand new and this court decides because of whatever happens in the future that we can't afford it anymore, that the community doesn't wanna afford it, then we take it away. From, for new people, not for people that are working today and for people that are already retired. We got that seventeen percent reduction last year, we absorbed it, y'all paid, continue to pay the same amount. I think that it's just like, uh, former Commissioner Lindsay said, we're, we're really not paying that much because of the differences that we see. Uh, some years they do go up, some years it goes down. And we all know that at some point with healthcare, if it continues to rise the rate it has, it's not just here, it's everywhere. We're gonna have to figure something else out. Our association, the Texas Association of Counties is trying to figure out a way to get people healthy. Because if you've got a healthy pool, then insurance goes down. We got over a quarter million dollar, or close to a quarter million dollar just, uh, a few years ago because, uh, we had a healthier pool. Well, this last year too, we haven't. We didn't get any back and probably paid more. But it's something you just don't take away all of a sudden. And we continue to appreciate those people that have done the work and that are doing the work going forward.
Your turn.
You got a man I will have?
Yes, sir.
Say, what, what'd be wrong with, uh, taking that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars you're pooping off out here at the country club and putting it in? Instead of for one percent, putting for the people that's worked for the county for thirty, thirty-five, forty years you're talking about? Because there's only about thirty people that play golf out there.
I have to disagree with that, but, uh, that, that's a completely different issue that we're not gonna get off into. Now, when, when I came into office in January, um, one of the things that I have, have said since then and have continued to say is that Scurry County is not Scurry County without the people. That's the current people and you, those that have come before us, who've, who've, who've laid the groundwork. And I think I've shown that I'm gonna fight for the employee. Even getting called names in here because I was fighting for those employees. And so, to me, you're still Scurry County family, all right? So I'm, I'm gonna continue to fight for that because you are part of the family. With all, with, with just that little bit said, what I'm gonna say is, and I don't make a lot of motions, but I'm gonna make this motion, is that, uh, Scurry County absorb the additional cost of the retirees' insurance instead of putting it onto the retiree.
Honestly, I get that.
Were there any more comments at this point? Okay, Oliver? All right. Okay, uh, court to discuss and consider a full-time position to replace a part-time position in Precinct Two. That's, that's you, Mr. Gray?
Yes, sir.
I've got a young man that I dang near think was born out there at that precinct farm. Uh, Randall raised him and Dale did. I really just can't say how many years he's been there, but when I come on board, well, uh, we got the guys in the room in the side and in the back. And, uh, with the help of the college deal over here across the street, got him some, uh, commercial driver's license and, uh, I'm, I'm leaving that, but colors of the way. She explained it to me. It's got something to do with Obamacare, and I don't understand that kinda deal, he's not even in no more, but that's the deal. Although you can just have, you gotta get him on part-time, you gotta get him off of part-time and then let him shut off and not pay, well, you can't do that. And have a hand. And so I'm wanting to put him on, uh, uh, full-time. I know that they're gonna, everybody's gonna say, oh, that's another hand. Well, I'm sorry, and she's waiting, flying right now. I've got the, uh, I've got the money to do it with, but I didn't have the full-time to begin with for the fire. So, Lord Angela, I've got the money to do the biggest part of it. I've got money and the deal that I got off of the road thing to cover the rest. So, and I will not, we'll keep on, Dale will keep on picking him up. He will not get a pickup, pick him up just like he does and carry him to work. Uh, and then one in my other hand, bring him home, uh, so there won't be no expense there. And we're gonna start that road, uh, just sometime either before the first or right after the year, and I'm gonna need every hand I got uh, to try to build that road that got tore up. Now, maybe I can get some help off of the other precincts, but they may be busy too, uh, in the winter. A lot of them go on vacation. So therefore, uh, I've gotta have every hand I can, that I've got, uh, just for that if we're gonna start it. So, uh, and I've got a deal here that I, that shows if I could find it in all this trash I bring up here all the time. It shows that, uh, that, how'd I get it out of that, too? That, uh, Jim had, uh, six, I believe, uh, hands. You, I don't know who the U was there or not, but precinct one had five hands, John had five hands. And I had, uh, whoever was there had four hands there. So, they show the precinct can have five hands, there's no deal that's saying that you can't have five hands. Uh, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, well, I need them, and they're too hard to get. And, uh, so, uh, that's my story.
I know who he's talking about, and Taylor has done above and beyond.
Yes.
And it would, uh, I would hate to see Craig losing because you get somebody that wants to work for the county. And Lord knows, he went, jumped through the hoops to get his driver's license, which is theoretically a requirement for you to be a road bridge in.
And you're the high precinct anymore.
And, uh, I just hate seeing them because they're hard to come by, we all know that. So I make the motion, we'll allow Craig Merritt to, for another full-time employee.
Second.
Second.
Oliver?
As of today?
As of today? Is that your motion as of today?
Yeah.
They lay their hand away, they're gonna always check up. So, not even gonna have a check today.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you for coming. We'll consider agreement with A-one Air Conditioning for the disconnection and relocation of HVAC units at the Scurry County Golf Course, clubhouse for auction and the costs associated therewith. Thank y'all for coming, we sure do appreciate you. You're more than welcome, come anytime y'all want. Glad to have you.
Try to stay out here during my time, make your turn to the bar now. You take care of it.
We're trying. Thank you. Okay, um.
We're just disconnecting.
Thank y'all for coming. All right, so what we're discussing here is, uh, an agreement with A-one Air Conditioning to disconnect and relocate the HVAC units. What this would be is, uh, A-one Air Conditioning would come and remove all the air conditioning units off the building at the, at the, um, golf course and, uh, set them on the ground. They, what they would want in exchange is one unit. They get one of the units to take them all off, it costs us no money, and it kinda gets us ready for whatever we're gonna do. Then we can auction those off, those other units off.
Well, let's keep them up.
So, so you understand, A-one would get one unit and we would keep the rest.
They're family.
And it would be?
Two, three, four, five.
There's seven? Oh, wow, seven units.
Good Lord, I make the motion to let them take them off and give them.
They're different sizes, and it would be whichever one they were.
Sure. I, I thought I understood that two of them, which.
They were all donated to?
They, 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 they do.
And there's motion, motion is second, Oliver? All right. I know it, line item transfers, and there's no budget movement, correct?
There are several line item transfers, so. The first one is from the county attorney's office, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars into education and training out of maintenance agreement, public office liability insurance, logbooks and supplies. Second one is maintenance department, uh, five hundred dollars into fuel and oil out of maintenance and repair. The third one is the health unit, uh, forty-five hundred dollars into education and training out of operating lab fees, equipment under five thousand, uh, maintenance repairing miscellaneous, uh, to cover the cost of required continuing education and receive certifications for immunizations and environmental health. Totally in forty-five hundred dollars. The next one is precinct one, road and bridge, ten thousand dollars into maintenance and repairs out of road material and construction. Says this is what happens when you keep old equipment and the warranty, after the warranty expires. Precinct three, road and bridge, maintenance and repair, twelve thousand five hundred dollars, communications, five thousand dollars out of road material and road and material and construction, excuse me, and fuel and oil. Equipment repair and placed radios in every piece of the furniture. Precinct four, road and bridge, part-time, two thousand dollars, and out of road material and construction, ran out of money for part-time. Harmley Water Works, operating supplies, forty-five hundred, education and training, a thousand, and repairs, a thousand, out of contract labor. He says, I need to pay the bills. EMS, uh, in equipment between a thousand and five thousand, twenty-two, seventy-five, ninety-nine, out of maintenance or repair miscellaneous, to cover expenses for mobile VHF radio deck and license key.
Any questions?
No, because I can't remember what any of those was. Feels that time of year.
Yes, sir.
All right, there it goes.
Second. Second, Oliver.
Now we'll pay the bills, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-four cents, so the payables.
Second.
You guys are confusing me.
She's confusing me, yeah. You're speaking as quietly as Sean does.
Well, sure, bother me.
All right, uh, the only thing left on the agenda is to adjourn. Oliver?
Too late, Jim.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Do, were we gonna go ahead and sign these amendments to some of this stuff, or is that gonna come back later, all these abatements and? Yeah, on the abatement ones. The First Amendment to the Tax Abatement Agreement, and it's just you and me signing those. The resolution for the request of the road.
Thank you. Appreciate you, sir. No problem.
What about the?
Okay, so we did the resolution approving the use, the road use. We okay that, right? So, everybody needs to sign that one. I have a note from Cynthia to make sure she gets all these. Where you gonna get everything? It always shows up. Thanks, Craig. I appreciate y'all.
Hi, Miss Colleen.
How are you?
I'm good, you? Okay, and you have?
Let's see if I have. There's, there's about it, we know, I'm on low budget, so.
Thanks, dear.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. How are you?
Please, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's all ones I didn't sign. And S needs to be just one for Fred Cross, right?
That's a first, and that's, or do you have a part between?
Does that thing still?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it's. Must stay on until we are out.
Okay, what else? Yes, because I, I don't always get all the names spelt right. That way I get the names spelt right. And I need that.
You spell check, go work.
Not on some names.
She is gonna be unhappy with you.
It's true. But that won't be the first of it.
But you did say you weren't paying Alamoni, so you're still gonna.
Well, I'm staying with mine thirty-eight years. But you stayed with yours a lot longer, I'm sure.
Sean.
I don't think he, I think she.
Oh, you can't sign that one, that was the, the road thing. For them, yeah.
There, did you need that back before, give it to her?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, so I think I've got everybody signed here that needs to sign. I won't trip y'all as you leave now, so they. Chase nobody down.
It's so soft, I can't hardly pick it up.
I know, mine too. I've got one cherry, I'm gonna, Sammy was wanting another one, I'll make and bring up here, I think you'll enjoy. It's almond flour and psyllium husk and xylitol. It is, and you can, I guarantee you, you can take a bite of that and a bite of the other and tell the difference.
Oh, I know it.
Stuff that I can't pronounce. Stuff that I can't pronounce.
It is good. Can you get it off, Craig?
I hope so. I don't want to go prepared again today.
I have to. Man, Melody loves it when we have these kind of meetings because she gets to scan it all in. I know, this one is just, it's falling. It's going to be some good moisture.